With the Housing Support Group, Glenn Greenwood for the 186th Main Street Proposal. You want to come up to the table? Can't see anything, maybe you'll sit in the middle of the glare. Can you move six inches that way? Perfect, now I can see you. Hi, floor is yours.
Okay. I just want to introduce myself, my name is Paula Nukon, I'm the Executive Director of Housing Support Inc. We're a nonprofit with our offices in Newport, Mass. And this will be our ninth building in Merrimack Valley in Southern New Hampshire. I think some of you may know that we've been talking to a few people around town since about January of this year. And we are here with our council to try and help us through this process and explain anything to me that I don't understand. I have brought copies of the site claim, is that helpful to anyone while we're talking about this? It's just the latest of this site claim. So Housing Support's been around since 1991, provides services to folks who have a variety of issues of three quarters, but we have some T and H units, units in Massachusetts. And we have buildings for our men designing, maintaining sobriety in Massachusetts. We have a building for women that are trying to maintain their sobriety that are also victims of domestic violence in Massachusetts. And in fact, the building in Massachusetts has a big stone in front of it, and it is the birthplace of Josiah Bartlett. So I always kind of felt we had like a little relationship going here of some kind, so.
Good evening folks, my name is Courtney Burris, I'm attorney at Sheen Finney. And I imagine you folks all have a copy of the letter that my colleague sent to Mr. Greenwood. And I'm happy to restate what's in the letter, but that seems like a waste of your time. So our position is laid out in that letter, if anyone has any questions for either of us, we're happy to answer them. But we hear you have plenty of things to talk about tonight, so we won't restate what we've put in the letter.
I think based on our attorney's advice that we're going to concede that this is a loud use. And they'll need to go through all the necessary permits and everything for that use. I don't know how much further I want to take that, other than to say you have to follow building codes and septic and everything else that's involved.
Um, we-
Just confirming that the use, what we've discussed before is that it will be annual leases for each of the individuals.
That's correct. That's correct. They will have what they call VASH certificates, which is a form of Section A for veterans. That will be handled by the state of New Hampshire, VA. They will be providing food, farmers to us. And these are, this is permanent housing, this is long-term housing.
For veterans, not necessarily for these individuals.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
It's long-term housing for veterans, but not necessarily the seven individuals that move in. Because they could turn over, they will turn over.
If they want to leave at the end of the year, yes.
So they sign a one-year lease?
Yes.
Why did you pick Kingston?
Excuse me?
Why did you pick Kingston? How is it that you picked Kingston? In the middle of the historic district? That's the issue, nothing I can do about it. Why did you pick Kingston?
Well, because we understand there's a need for veterans' housing in Southern New Hampshire. And we found the building that met our needs. And we are extremely interested in preserving historic homes. So I think we're intending to invest significant funds in the building so that it will still be here for another 200 years. I promise you, we're going to do a really good job on the building. So we have no intention of altering the historic qualities of that building. I promise you we don't. The move will go, that's our first step according in terms of my understanding of the process. Is that we go to the Historic District Commission. Based on our informal meetings with the towns, town in the past, Mr. Wilson was there, also Mr. Greenwood. We had some great advice from the building inspector. So we are no longer going to try and build that room.
I noticed that.
Yeah.
You've substituted the public.
We're going to do it at the very rear of the building, that will be covered over. So the only items that we'll be asking the Historic District Commission to consider would be replacement windows. And we propose is our good quality replacement window. Removing the two side entrances that you can see and just replacing it with this rear addition at the back that will become. That's it, that's all we would do, everything else would be restored and maintain the historic nature of the building. So, just wanted to make my last question.
No, I'm just looking, so you've got places in Bradford, Mass, Ansbury, Lawrence, and Newbury Portis. Just looking at different places that you have.
Yeah, our offices in Newbury Portis.
Anybody have anything else?
I think what we determined was because of the use and everything else, that it would just require a building permit. Doesn't require planning board is what I was surprised to hear. But just like I said, the only thing I would say is it has to follow all building and fire codes.
Absolutely. We'll do whatever's necessary.
Thank you folks. We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You as well.
Well, she wants to hang out. Sure you got better things to do on Monday night?
Never.
Thank you.
Well, come anytime you want if you enjoy this amount of Kingston Select Board meetings. You should try the ZVA and the Planning Board, those are hooves.
I'll get there.
You will.
Thank you.
Be careful what you wish for.
How is Carrie doing? How's Carrie doing?
She's good, her family's better.
Okay. We're gonna see her soon or?
She will be back September 4th, I think. As long as everything's going to be good. Yeah, alright.
Thank you. Public comment number one. Committee Liaison Awards.
Do you want Glenn to comment on it, or does he need to stay?
Yeah, you don't, you didn't hit the road.
Hit the road, Jack.
Really enjoy our meeting.
I'm gonna go call Rob.
Is that okay, did he let you go? I mean, did you, did you want it, did you want to talk to him?
Nope, that was what we needed to talk about.
Okay. Very good, talk to him soon.
Yes, I already did, yes, we will talk soon.
You want to start, Ellie?
My committee, oh, I'd be happy to. First of all, I want to thank the Kingston Lake Association, they came up with what, a hundred thousand dollar grant for the Kingston Lake.
Very nice.
Kudos to Muriel and the gang and the Camp Lincoln folks that worked hard to get this possible, to make our lake a cleaner, better place to be. And that's number one. Number two, we had Kingston Days this past weekend, I think it went relatively well. The traffic had around the plains, which I think is very well received. And I'm sure we'll see more of that down the road. I talked with Charlotte Zegura to see if she had an idea whether we were in the black or not. She seems to think we are, but we really won't know until the money from Finelli's carnival comes in. Because that was a big plus, from that respect. They had a bigger carnival, more rides, we should be doing well. The ZVA has updated its policies and procedures, that was finalized last Thursday night. And the new, the updated version according, it incorporated the recent changes in the legislative procedures for ZVAs. So that's just all been updated accordingly. So that's now posted on our website, I believe. And we have three new staff members that we want to announce from.
Okay.
We have offered the Financial Director position to Paula Mahoney from Kingston. She will begin September 6th. We've offered the Land Use Administrative Assistant, working for both the Planning Board and the zoning board, to Robin Cotter. And she started actually today. And we also offered the position of the Human Services/Welfare Department, another part-time position, to Melissa Frederico. And she'll be starting shortly.
Like to welcome all aboard.
Absolutely. So that's it for me.
Kevin?
Well, I'll piggyback a little off of Kingston Days, it was hot.
Wicked hot.
And I would really like to single-handedly point out Charlotte Zegura, she worked a tail off, and all the people that volunteered. It was a hot three days. And the volunteers worked tirelessly, so I'd really like to definitely thank all the volunteers. Whether it was two hours or two years, you know, it was, it was hard. The cowpatty went off good, the cow showed up, so it was a good thing. I'd like to thank Phil Poon. She did her thing, and-
But I didn't win.
No, you did not.
Neither did I.
I didn't know any of the winners, to be honest with you.
I didn't know.
It was interesting, everyone was concerned because the cow found a small 10 by 15 trap of shade. He stayed in the shade, and it was like, oh, there's the lucky ones. But guess what, a cow knows better. And when he was ready to do his thing, he came, her, she came out from the shade and walked the field and picked two plots right off the bat. But anyways. The, I met with the police chief this week, and let's just say, there's a new sheriff in town. It's not the Joel that I ever knew. He is giddy, he is happy, he is excited. He's doing minor renovations at the police station that really doesn't cost much money. He has a vision, he's working hard on recruitment. I think the Select Board assisted him pretty good with retainment, retention. But he's working hard on recruitment, Kingston will be coming forward with the first full female officer, which is exciting. But I, just to say he's a kid in a candy store would be an understatement. He is all full of, you know, he is very excited to be chief, and he's hit the ground running. That's all I have. Oh, there was a Historic District meeting for an in-law apartment that was approved down further on 140 Main Street, I believe. That was all they had, so.
Planning work, just as an update of the last couple of items that were there. It's the dog training facility on 125 in Johnson Road, where the car places are now. They've come in and they have got to do a little bit of work yet before it can be approved. But minor stuff, they're working on that. And I think Phil is working on, we did find, they found a pot plant, a 10,000 square foot lot that supposedly belonged to the town behind South Station. But they're working on trying to prove that it was on the town, or suppose it was given to the town years ago. But then even though it's got a recording number, last I knew, they still haven't been able to find out if in fact it belongs to the town. The guy doesn't need it or want it, so they're working on that. The old Catholic church is trying to be bought by the churches in the plaza over here. And they came in with a letter, was wanting us to approve it that night. Because they needed information for financing, of which we did give them a letter encouraging them to go to the bank with it. To say that it was a church, it can be a church, it's just that you've got to consider the subject and the well, and the sharing of the well and stuff.
They're not sharing the well anymore, they've got their own well.
They separate that. So there's some things going on there, but again, if they continue to pursue it, that should be proper for that. The firehouse, Graham pretty much gave you the info on it, it's moving along. Minor stuff that they're still doing, hopefully the generator will be within the next month. And some kind of open house in October. Maybe we talked about pipe prevention week, having a dedication type ceremony there. Who we can get to come to that, Graham's working on that.
Do we, no, do we get the grant yet for the, um, generator?
So it's in FEMA already, so I'm not sure, lost track because now it's on Homeland Security, State Department, it's in FEMA. So I don't know, I'll try to reach out to my dad tomorrow, but I'm sure he can't say anything. Now it's FEMA's end, you're talking about, I don't know how much we can do with that.
Didn't you call Janet Stevens up?
Yeah, and I will say Janet Stevens attacked this like a pit bull. She went right to the top, she has had multiple conversations with Commissioner Quinn. She has talked with the governor, she's shaken every tree that is possible, and it should, I believe, Graham has talked extensively with her. I was just kind of a go-between, but she has worked tirelessly.
Doesn't count until we get the check though.
I got you, I got you. Well, there was a little snafu that, of someone didn't put, it wasn't on our end, but someone didn't put in paperwork.
I understand that, but the primary is September 13th.
Yep.
Just a reminder of that. Say it.
The other thing with the plan, the President of the House got another extension on his landscaping until October.
Of October of this year or next year?
Well, it's supposed to be October of this year. Apparently can't find anybody to do it. He offered to give the money to the town, lots of town will do it.
Oh, easy for them to say.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what's happening there. Budget committee wise, obviously nothing going on. However, I think now it's going to be appreciated to introduce her to Tammy and that, but now we'll wait till Paul is online. We'll come in and give her an idea of what we needed, you know, in the fall.
Speaking of Tammy, she's done a young man's job in managing that finance department for us. And thank you very much for that effort, it's been major. I know it's very stressful for you, but thank you. It's much appreciated on many levels.
Anything else?
That's it. Old business.
I have a couple things.
I'll see.
One on the town slash congregational church agreement. I provided you all, I sent everyone has a copy. The yearly cost for testing the pump is $500, and we say we charge a third, so that's not bad. What I did notice after us going through everything, there was, there was stuff in here that they pay, you know, the yearly cost and all that. There's nothing if there's a failure to the system. You know, do they pick up a portion of the cost?
Yes.
And I think they should. But what I would propose is, you know, there is the museum, this building, and the fire apartment, and then the church. There's four buildings, I know, I'm okay with the one-third on that, but I don't know, I was gonna say maybe one-fourth the cost of any repairs to the pipe or the pump or anything if there's any failures, you know. There shouldn't be for years, but it should be in there anyways, you know, when the pump dies in five years, they're gonna pick up the cost for it. Not five years, 25 years or whatever.
Hopefully it's more than five.
So if you're okay with that, I will work with Susan to get language for an extra clause about any catastrophic failure, then picking up. We okay with 25%?
Yep. Is that it?
That's, oh, and then I did call Andrea with you, audio/video experience. Because I haven't heard anything from her. And she is in the process of still collecting everything, she's not gonna have microphones, but she's still collecting stuff to come over. But she did say, the last communication she had, she sent over an invoice, she's looking for a deposit. So she's looking for-
It's in that pile, it's in there.
Yeah, so there's a 50% deposit that she's looking for. And then with that, she's still active, but yeah, she's getting everything.
And if we, once we get the 50% deposit, how fast?
Do, do microphones or backboard, would the other stuff she's gonna be able to use on microphone?
You said that before, when can she get here, when she gets in charge?
She's talking about starting at the end of the month.
Which month?
This month, I thought, what she meant by the email.
I mean, she's still within the timeline frame she gave us. She told us six to eight weeks before.
Yeah, so I mean, I, she, her email just came tonight, you must have just got a few, yeah. I didn't read the email, but it came tonight, I talked to her this morning, she said she'd send over something new, but. Alright, that's all I got for old business.
You mean that?
Okay.
What, Graham, what did we do about the grant for the firefighters? Anything, are we gonna do that, not gonna do that?
Uh, research and development.
Okay, so there's not a big push for that.
No, it's, uh-
The other thing, maybe you guys can bring up later too, Richard's here. We got something about a request for proposals for a clean diesel program, if there's money available out there. You got something, Richard, that you're-
That's on the bill, it's just that they're looking to do it.
Okay.
There's two trucks that qualify, and they pay for, actually, where is that truck? That would qualify with engine one and the tanker. They're going to replace them in the next year, they pay for 50% of the cost, the total cost of the vehicle. So highway primaries including plows, spreaders, anything you want to put on that truck. So your little truck doesn't want to walk, and it qualifies, they probably, this pedal ramp, they have to shut across. Vehicle, vehicles, inhibition, dirty vehicles, off-road, and a clean, cleaner vehicle, and also non-likable vehicles, what, what are we gonna do?
Alright. New business, library raffle?
Alright, let me start on this one here. I didn't realize that we have an RSA in the books that require us to offer permits for raffles. And not only do we offer permits, but the raffle tickets have to include the name, the organization, and date, place, and when the drawing is, a list of the prizes to be awarded, and the amount of donation. Now, the Friends of the Library have two raffles a year. They have, they raise about $500 or $600 per raffle. And they use those, those tickets that you put your name on, phone number one end, and the numbers on the other. I have called the Municipal Association, stressed everyone's on vacation, there's only one attorney available, and I have not yet spoken to him. And what I proposed, I spoke to the Friends today, and I will tell this to the attorney. The way to, in my opinion, to meet the intent and the spirit of the regulation is the, the tickets are sold at the library. So that when a person buys the tickets, they should be handed a flyer that lists the name, the organization, date, place of the drawing, a list of all the prizes. The prizes are all there at the library for individuals to see, because what they do is when they tear up their tickets, they put into the different bags for different prizes. The legislation is there to protect the buyer of the lottery tickets that they get in what they're spending their money for. And I totally understand that, and there's a whole other section on gaming laws, but this is its own special section. So I think that would take care of it, we have a permit, I didn't see it, designed it.
It's in the sub-cause, I saw it.
Okay, okay. And I would suggest that we, that we give them an annual permit dated from a year from now through September 1st. And then allow them to have up to three raffles that year, as long as they give out a sheet for each purchase, so that people know what they're getting, and they can, like I said, they can see that right there. I think that covers the spirit and the intent of the legislation without creating an undue hardship for the Friends. Because they're not gonna, you can't, you have to eight and a half by 11 to put 49s on it. You know, it's gonna be in expedited legisla, you can't, you know, they use those tickets so you can put your name in different prizes. You don't have to, you know. So I think that means it's the intent of the legislation, you get the permit done. I think it's funny that the next item is a gun raffle by Ken Wyler, who was probably one of the legislators that supported this legislation, and never asked anyone back home what it means. So, that's my editorial comment on raffle tickets.
Well, they knew because they, he asked for permission to do the gun raffle, we did that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, because it was a gun raffle, he must have known, but never thinking, I don't know.
Well, it's interesting, I guess I didn't realize for the, like the cowpatty, I knew it had the list, who the money's going for, what the prizes are, and what the cost is.
It's all on there.
And it's all on there, and I made sure there was the, but I guess we-
You buy a ticket, you buy a ticket, you buy a pack. So you get your name and all that, and you get the top half of the ticket.
Yep.
And you buy them individually, you don't buy 15 tickets for $10, which is what you do with the, because they're the ones that you split apart. So that works, that would be appreciated.
And correspondence with the contract for the legal services there?
I'm sorry, contract with what?
With this firm. It's just an update, which is, I think what we've had before, but it's been updated.
So you, you need that signed?
Yeah, I need to sign it.
So authorize, well, I mean, we already approved, but authorize the chair to sign the engagement letter for our planning, our land use attorney, Drummond Woodson.
Yeah. That's a second, I'm sure.
Second, yes. Sorry, I didn't know-
Discussion.
All his favor say.
Aye.
Motion carries. Update ARPA.
Okay, these are too generic.
I don't know why there's two. I thought maybe we need to copy, and we need to copy, so I signed both of them. I know, I just had a updated sheet. Yeah, I saw it, I just had it a minute ago, I just don't know where-
You talking about the legal, you signed that?
No, I signed the legal, this is about this. The laptop guy called me, and I was in Montana, and I told him I'd get back to him this week. So hopefully by the next meeting I will have those prices. Phil had another heart attack, and here today to get his price on this building.
Run that by me again.
Phil had another company in here to give his price on redoing this building, CMA. I don't know if anybody has anything else on this, I mean, it's, we're up to 378,000 roughly out of 616,000. Now, there was stuff on there about the library, has that been included in something else or?
Took that out in the last-
Yeah, we were waiting on seeing like the lo, the library, their computer, whatever, did we say?
Laptops and digital.
Yeah, there's 38, they, they gave us an atomization on that, 38 something.
Yeah, it was on there, and you guys chose to take it out.
That was not the last meeting, that was-
It was at the Department's meeting, I think. Or no, before that.
No, 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 it was earlier than that, Susan, because we talked about it at the last meeting, said that we would add it on, that's what I thought.
I thought you took it out, it was on there. And then there was a discussion about how you have to make choices about what you're including and what you're not. And that was one thing I thought you took out, so you want it back in?
It's, it's, it's on my list here, $3,900 is right here, number one.
It was on the old one, yeah.
All right, but, yeah, we get new and we don't update it.
Okay, well, the laptops, I should have a price on by our next meeting.
So I'll check on the library, pretty sure that the decision was to take it off, and we told Melissa that.
Let's see, it, 'cause I took these two up over here and said, okay, the tablet folding machine, okay, the laptops and three D printer for the library and for the tax maps. That's how I am.
Okay.
And then take out this, I mean, I'll be happy to give that to you.
That's, that's the way I, I had it initially, and I took them out for this round, 'cause I thought we decided that. I'll go check, check.
Okay.
Do you want that back on, the library?
I do.
Okay, yes. Definitely be there for discussion. Uh, closing of the town offices, election day, September thirteenth and November eighth. Also, the clerk's office will close at five o'clock on the Monday's proceeding notice. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Do we need a motion or sup- surprise?
As long as it's included, anything, we said okay. Are we gonna allow, that's up to the moderator about anyone in the foyer, right, from like a bake sale or...
That's up to the moderator. Um, we have six applications for the selectman open spot.
Okay.
Now, we kinda messed up our dates, but we're accepting these till Thursday, and then we're gonna make a decision next Monday. So we can kinda, we're gonna meet next Monday, so we can do one of two things. We can either look through these and pick somebody based on no more coming in, or we can wait.
We should wait, just, just update us with any...
Have you seen these? You wanna look at them and pass them around so everybody knows?
I, there was, there was a packet.
Oh, everybody's got the packet. Okay, I didn't know everybody had it.
Yeah.
Assuming that, that nobody else signed up, assuming that we have these here. Should we submit maybe like the top three internally, I mean, rather than...
Why not just decide that day? I don't think it's gonna be...
Unless you gotta know somebody.
Six people and four votes, I mean, you know, it could be, it could get interesting.
Well, if it does, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll punt. I mean, if the posting, it's not here, that, we should wait and see and just look at all.
See what we get. No, I have no problem with that, discuss it.
You're happy to meet in my office on Friday if you'd like. I claimed it as my office from the day I got elected as your selectman.
Highway block grant money received.
That's just for your information if that came in, that's...
Okay.
Beyond the quarterly amounts or whatever.
Yeah, there's a extra fund in there of a hundred and forty-four, which, God bless the legislature, it's so good to us.
Did you want...
They need to give us back some money, is what they need. They keep spending it. And their rainy day funding, God knows what they're spending it.
Um, did you want a meeting on Friday to make this decision or no? I mean, I'll post one if you wanna meet briefly to go through those candidates.
Is there a meeting Monday night or no?
No.
There's no meeting on Monday, so this way?
We'll meet Friday briefly. Are you working or?
I'm, I'm, I, I could meet Friday morning.
Wanna do Friday morning?
Sure.
What time?
Eight thirty.
That's, it's me. Can you get up that early?
I can get me dressed and have coffee by that. I'm up.
Okay, so we'll meet eight thirty, that morning to, uh, finish that off. Uh, we have a complaint about shots being fired on Little River Road. And I will speak to the people and see what we can do, but most of the time there's not much we can do if they're shooting in an illegal manner. People are complaining about noise, but it doesn't really violate the noise ordinance because it's not a continuous noise.
And it's not loud enough as a shot?
It is loud enough. It's just, our ordinance is written that it says ten minutes of continuous sound, which is another flaw that we have to work on in our ordinance.
Keith, do you know if you're able to determine where it's coming from?
I think I talked to Joel about it before I left and he said that they were shooting legally.
Okay, that's only, 'cause it was happening over the time that before too, we told. You finally found out where it's coming from and it was, I mean, that's the, the legal part of this is, they got the room and no neighbors and all that.
Okay, here's the highway block grant, what we're, um...
We definitely have a kind of it.
Yeah, this is... Payment made to state, that's highway. We have to pay new hires in there and stuff.
Yeah.
Approval of the minutes for August third and fifth.
So move public to non-public?
Motion approval, discussion. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Those, motion carries. More public comment?
Unless anyone wants to...
I think, um, Phil was going to come back.
Yeah.
Rich wanted to talk with you, but I think maybe not.
Well, I knew Rich wanted to talk in non-public, correct?
Yep.
Anybody have anything else?
Nope. Wrecked.
Thank you very much for watching. We will be going into non-public.
Thanks, Tammy. Unbelievable.
Well, we start at six, that's a big help.